The whole thing is specifically we're looking at student, families, staff satisfaction. We talk about how we measure satisfaction. Likewise, we give you a bit of an overview so you understand what our index questions are. There are eight. And then when we, how we determine whether or not a family is satisfied, it's whether they agree or strongly agree to seventy-five percent or more of the questions. So that's when we designate someone as our satisfied. So just a couple of notes, like I said, the survey was open from people eighth through day thirtieth. We sent out division level and school level refined messaging. We sent out flyers, we had on some chairs, knocked on doors, things of that nature. We had at the end of school where people were coming to sign the blow up as their children got picked up from school, et cetera.
Sorry.
So we did a lot of outreach and so we wanted to make sure as many families as possible and a lot of the schools on their different levels also share this satisfaction survey. Yeah, the wrong, the wrong region, but. Are we live streaming?
No, we're not streaming.
We're not live.
We are audio recording.
Oh, perfect.
So just so we know that, that's still going.
But we know how to pivot. Absolutely. So I will continue here. We have some incentives as well just to make sure that families, you know, there were instruments wrapped for, said you completed your survey. We gave out twenty-five dollar gift cards, things of that nature. So we also have some kind of survey results that they can share with all school leaders so they can understand how their individual community participated in the satisfaction survey, what were some of the highs, where some of the areas were broke, et cetera. So we'll be having school leader meetings this month informing their planning. Okay. And then the big thing here is we get a two percent increase in our family satisfaction rate from last year to this year from seventy-six percent to seventy-eight percent. And then you can see how we did on the question, we did want to be as transparent and show our insights. And so that is featured as well to be able to tell how we're not just the percentage numbers, but also how we're setting up in terms of the number of respects. And lastly, here are some of the things that we might continue to improve our family satisfaction for within next year. Have review schedule, providing gift blurs, sending reminders, et cetera. And making sure that we're facilitating meaningful family engagement and launching awareness campaign. Because as you notice, our insights add a thousand dollars. And while we are using all the same methods similar to what we saw during the virtual year, we do know that our family's material is lost in the theater. There wasn't as much to do in April in many times where people are out and about. But what we want to do is make sure that we get back to and not improve on those numbers. And so what you see on the final slide is ways that we're thinking about how do we, how do we get our engagement up with the families.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Greenbough, is the survey dramatically shorter or longer than it used to have?
No, because now it remains the same length.
Want to follow up on that one too. So on slide number six, number, I see that this is, as you mentioned with a copy of that, dramatically different insights, it's kind of hard to really say. So I'll just point out that on number seven, on that, on number six, that's pretty big gap. There does seem to be a decrease in people feeling like the school staff collaborate on the child retention. And obviously.
Around two thousand twenty.
From twenty twenty all the way down.
Yes.
And anecdotally, I hear a little bit about that, you know, sometimes it's an ease, others it's not. I guess I'm curious, how, the way of having the experiences are against for their local school.
Yes.
And so how are these results, are these results, are these shared in terms of digest?
In terms of the entire school community or the school leadership?
The school leadership.
So we have compiled with the help of a lovely intern. And we have compiled each one of these satisfaction surveys and distilled them down to the school level. And throughout the month of August, we will be meeting, facilitating meetings with our school leadership to walk them through what their percentages are. But there were also some open ended comment sections which we have summarized and kind of, not generalized because it's serious and sensitive to their communities. But for each one of them, we have lays listed out and we're going to meet with each one of the school leaderships so they can understand, these are some of the challenges that your families are showing. Not just the numbers, the numbers are really easy to kind of process through, but some of the people who took the time to write out comments and help them kind of understand where, how their communities, their families are feeling and what they'd like to see, as well as, you know, that's a thing that they should continue to do. So each one, beautiful satisfaction survey form, happy to share what, an example of what one of those.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Along the lines of what Mr. Fisher was asking, I wonder if there are ways that leaders at the middle school level could reflect out some of the results with their school community. Sometimes with these surveys, our families fill them out and then they just feel they go into the abyss. And does anyone read that? Think about what I just said. If you're not kind of peering back from the principal on, you know, here are things that our community think we're doing really well. Here are things that we need to work on, here's what I'm thinking about, just bring that up for the chair. And that might encourage just more, a little more of experience because when they're actually seeing it and not seeing how the rest of my community.
Absolutely, Mr. Card. So we can work on helping principals not just understand and digest the material, but how maybe they should communicate what they have heard and how they're moving to act following the results. That's the problem with the result at all. We've shared some of the data already for all of our four, all four of our two hundred day schools. Their, your work is done. We had just a little bit of decision making over how we were going to measure growth of documents. And so that's the one delay, but we should have all of the needs included by data. But we can already know.
And it might not be, you might not be the first to address this, but I know this other survey was on that. Will we also go forward on that as well?
Yep, I was coming as well, along with students. And I know this has been on particular, if yours, Mr. Card. We will figure out a way to publish all the data for our schools and our school communities. So just wanted to thank you for that.
We'll just work on that.
Yeah. And I mean, thank you.
Mr. Fisher.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Dr. Greenbough. Mr. Cameras, someone answered my question already, but I'm hoping that maybe it could be possible for us to understand the breakdown of the indices based off of districts and schools. And is there a trend that some of the schools or some of the districts are seeing a drop off on that participation? I think that would tell us a lot about, you know, whether, you know, districts may be, you know.
Part of the reason why we have PAC is because we have families from all of the districts who could possibly go in and advocate based off of their learnings with where we've been working in collaboration to help motivate some of these organizations to maybe help, quote unquote, level the financial playing field. Likewise, we have worked with the Richmond Ed Fund where, in agreement with the Richmond Council of PTAs, they have agreed to give two years of startup funds to any school that elects to have specifically a PTA. And so we're to do those startup costs. So that way for the first two years, those organizations will not really have to worry about getting their PTA, PTOs off the ground and they can just focus on the work. So that's one. In terms of principal trainings, we have been to cluster meetings of principals all last year and sat down with them and educated them on the benefits of PTAs at both elementary and secondary. We're also going to continue working with them. Another recommendation for why we choose the PTA, we would like to recommend PTAs is because they have this amazing onboarding system where you can go in, you can have ready to launch fundraisers, you can have ready to launch engagement nights. Where it has all of the tools and tickets that they need. And Mr. Williams has been working with principals, sitting down and meeting, for instance, with Dr. Sampson over at Swansboro to really walk through, how are you envisioning this? What do you need, do you, in terms of filings? What do you need in terms of, you know, looking for your, your next leader? And the last thing that I would say on that, and if Anna has something to share, she's more than welcome to, is that we have gathered from every principal in the district, a list of potential parents that they think would be really great for helping them to start their different PTA, PTOs. We're, we can't work, there are a lot of schools. And so we're trying to be as strategic as possible and help as many people as possible launch as much as, that launch this year and into next year. And but the big goal that we have and the big push that we have for every principal is, don't just give us the list of people that you think will be amenable to participating. Who do you need to sit at the table also? And so to add that to their list, so we've been working on that.
I just wanted to contribute one piece that happened during PAC, which was exactly that discussion, that same frustration of how do we, how do we recommend PTA to one school that has a lot of, another school doesn't have it? Especially when they're right down the street from each other, they don't even need to be in different districts. They can be on the south side parent, and I know exactly what that looks like. We are literally, I can throw a stone and hit another school and they don't have a PTA when the PTA that I was on had a lot of money. And so our challenge was anytime we went to a business, and I would love to see every PTA do this. Let's say we're going to get five hundred dollars, we want the same matching funds at another school. So we need to create those partnerships. And I want to see that all from us. So that would be, I think, that's what happened, that was happening at PAC. So excited thinking about when we come together, how this will happen.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, absolutely. We've got to do matching, right?
Absolutely, we've got to do matching.
Thank you, Ms. Rizzi.
Thank you. And I'm really glad to hear that, actually. That's been a concern for many, many years. And so to work to make our PTAs equitable would be like a dream for a lot of people. Two things, are we ever going to get a breakdown by school? I'd just be interested in seeing which schools have them.
Absolutely.
And then, you know, I'm glad to hear that you're talking with administrators. I remember interacting with an administrator who wasn't sure that they even wanted their school. And so I'm glad to hear now that you're talking with them about the benefits and demystifying PTAs and welling peers. And so I have questions about the training. You know, sometimes PTAs can develop dynamics that aren't most welcoming. And so I'm wondering, is that a part of their training? Is that something that will be monitored, making sure that those dynamics don't submit and don't submit in a way that like, you know, parents who are on the outside, parents on the outside of that group or that inside group don't feel comfortable?
Oh, sorry to lose the microphone.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm bored of the game.
So that's part of the reason why, that was part of the focus of the Parent and Caregiver Advisory Council, is we wanted to work with them to help us develop trainings. We were working with parents and caregivers of our students from all districts to help us think through what is it that we need to help us bring different types of families to the table. And so that's something that we're really keeping at the forefront. And that's why I mentioned very early an area of growth that I would love if you all could help us with, is getting more of our multilevel families involved in our Parents and Caregiver Advisory Council because that is one of the growth areas that we have. But we do, the trainings that we are working on have been coming from homework that we've done with PAC as well from the Virginia PTA.
Mr. Hitchback, then Mr. Jafari, then Mr. Missburg.
My question's actually been addressed. I'm just very appreciative of the work. Thank you, Dr. Greenbough. Thank you, Ms. Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Jafari.
Yeah, Dr. Greenbough, and Ms. Mason, I want to thank sort of work that you put in. But when I look at it, and I'm from a district with some of that waning participation in those organizations and associations, much of it I see, and of course, Ms. Mason, you can chime in, is community ownership, taking ownership, community buy-in, also the lack of funding, lack of available funds, expendable funds, if you will, within certain communities, certain pockets. So I just wanted to kind of get both of your views from where you stand and what you deal with and what you see. How do, again, do you enrich that engagement? What do you see as some of the, I guess, the factors that call people to it? And I know that we're dealing with some language barriers. I know we're dealing with a lot of people who are having a really difficult economically. And that's going to change from district to district. And we need to be real about that. But by the same token, I'm still charged with a duty to go out there and get them engaged. So I guess I just want to, you know, kind of get a feel from some of the tactics, some of the ways you can go into the community and actually pull that out and get them interested.
So before you jump in, one of the things that I wanted to share is we were very thoughtful about PAC and how do we get fam, all families to participate. So for instance, we have childcare that's provided for all PAC meetings. We offer dinner for all PAC meetings. We also work to either carpool or provide transportation for all PAC meetings. So we do not want it to be a barrier for anyone to participate, even in our smaller council. And so with that, we also have interpretation services that are brought, both for those who are hard of hearing as well as those who speak additional languages. So we're still, we're trying to make sure that that space where we're planning and trying to, you know, really think about true engagement, that that first space is as diverse as possible. And then using our conversations there and our monthly meetings there to really think about how do we get the rest of our community. However, as I mentioned, there's a lot of more growth to do in that area. But we do try to lower the barrier as much as possible for these council meetings where we do that thought process that you're asking about.
We recommend the same thing at PTAs. If you don't provide childcare and you're not providing dinner, then you're not really welcoming. Has been our perspective. That being said, I led a PTA last year and I couldn't make it happen. Well, I did make translation services happen, but I think it's that process of learning. Like if you're not, if dinner is the barrier, provide dinner, figure this out. And maybe it's, one of the resources we used was where's the community location where you can get childcare? So the YMCA's have been really welcoming, our community centers have been really welcoming. We were lucky, I'm lucky to be attached to a community center and they were like, hey, just come on over and we'll provide childcare. But I think you're hitting on, the problem is, the big problem all across the world, right? How do we get people engaged in these things? I don't have the answer. I wish I did, but keep asking it and maybe we'll figure it out. And I just, I wait.
We're just trying to lower the barrier as much as humanly possible. Our families need our childcare.
I'm sure you're, I'm sure you're trained. A couple of follows. One, the, a moment ago, we talked about the shared equity. In other words, the house, giving something to the house. In your history or in your, how has, of working with this, have you ever run across a situation like that?
No, mostly because, not that I know of, but that's not to say it hasn't happened. But that's part of the reason why we want to make sure that many, as many as possible of our organizations are under similar umbrellas so that if they so choose to share, that they are able to, from a PTA to a PTA, and be able to engage with the council of PTAs. And so I can't say that it hasn't happened. But yes.
A south side example would be, one of the schools hosted a fall festival that was traditionally just for their school and instead said, why don't we just invite everyone? And so students from, it was at West River Hills, and students from Broad Rock, South Hampton, and that all came over based on the invites. And I'm hoping next year they'll have even more students. So I think it's just starting with the invite very first, saying, we're going to have this event. And if another school doesn't have it, wear your costume, come on over.
Okay, one other thing, one last thing. A moment ago, you talked about sometimes you're able to get childcare through the community centers. Are these city operated, community operated?
Yeah, yeah, because they already have the staff there doing the after school care and they have to be there till a certain time anyway. So they, it's connecting those, it's that list of resources is kind of what PAC was also working on. Like if one school knows that you can use the community center, or if one school knows you can get a really good discount from Papa John's, then every school should know about it.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you all so very much. I'm very passionate about this topic. Having been in a school that had four PTA members, eight dollars in the bank, one over the eight dollars. And eventually got to the point where as we would have up to nine hundred people attending activities, what we always would do would be to have children to perform. Whether it's three or four schools together, but anytime you have your mothers, grandparents, aunts and uncles, nothing judgmental, just to show off their children, it works. It works. It continues to work. And as you stated, feeding, food. But I found out that food isn't awesome, it depends upon the time of the month.
Right.
So we learned to have activities not at the first of the month, but at the end of the month. And the numbers were increased. One thing I would suggest is that when we have our training for administrators, that they also are trained with the PTA members, not separately. Because people leave with different interpretations and also different experiences, which can be a challenge. Where you think PTA should be, someone else may think totally different. So it's most important we're at the table together, just as we are here right now, perfectly aligned. Because at the end of the day, you can get a whole lot done and you don't always have to have hundreds of thousands of dollars and still meet the needs of your community. I like what you also said, Madam Co-Chair, regarding the partnerships. As you said, Papa John's, which is not one of my favorite, but some, some people love Papa John's. That's what they like, C.C.'s, pizza, whatever else. Parents also after having worked all day, two or three jobs, then to come to school in that kind of meeting is hard. So implementing those meetings is so important that there's a little joy for everyone. Whether it's the children being in the media center watching a film or someone reading to them. At the end of the day, it's always good just to include those trainees. And my last piece is something that worked well with us years ago. So we had, everything goes around, everything's a cycle, just different folks, okay? It's this, this flow here and high there. We've had competitions across the city. And you walked away from the competition with money. So for instance, for open back to school night, who had the most parents to attend? What school had the most persons to join? But you also had opportunities for knowing all the different needs and how diverse our community is, not just with Hispanics, but other nationalities as well, and also the socioeconomic piece. Are we providing bus transportation, GRTC, or something for our parents to get to the meetings? It makes, it makes a difference. And I have some other things as well if you'd like to hear. But I, thank you for what you're doing, you're honored, but you're not alone. You're not alone.
No.
So thank you, thank you so much, Ms. Rizzi.
Thank you, Mr. Percival, and then Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Very passionate about this. I may use my full three minutes for the first time. I hear the word welcoming a lot and I'm a little concerned that we're begging a question or assuming the problem. And, and the reason I say that is because in my experience on PTAs, it wasn't a welcoming problem. It was getting people to volunteer problem. So I've been on PTAs where dinner was not the issue, childcare was not the issues, and we physically chased people down to get them to volunteer. So I'd just be concerned that unless you've heard from families, is that the case? You've heard from families that, hey, I don't feel welcome there, I'd love to volunteer, but I don't feel welcome there. I just caution us about assuming that we're not creating a welcoming environment when the reality is universally, we have a problem with volunteerism and doing those type of things. One of the suggestions I had that we saw success with is sharing roles on the PTA. So you don't have to sign up to be the only person doing events, doing treasure, doing this. You can share that role with multiple people. Maybe it's two, maybe it's five people, but trying to get people in. We also set goals of volunteer for three hours during the school year. Every parent needs to volunteer for three hours so that you get a community type of involvement mentality going on for that. And then I'll pivot to the equitable question, how do we, how do we spread the money around equitably? One of the easy, the lowest lifts for that is to try to integrate that money vertically. So what we saw is that you can get parents to, you can get line items and budgets and you can get parents to give money at the elementary school level where they will give it to the middle school. They will give it to the high school because they know that their children are going to be on that track to those schools. And so not saying that we don't need to spread it out horizontally as well, but that is an easy, lower lift to get families on board with donating into those. But yes, joint fundraising is also a fantastic way to try and get some of that money spread around the city.
Dr. Harris Mohammed and Ms. Rizzi, then I have thoughts myself.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. While I was listening to you all share the information, as you're beginning to have the meetings, community meetings, I would love as a board member to participate to help. Sometimes they need to start with us to show that we fully support the work that you all are trying to do. But I would love to spearhead the first meeting or just be there to support, help feed. I don't necessarily have to say anything, but just to feed the families and things like that. I would love to help support that in any way.
Absolutely. Thank you. Yep. Thank you, Ms. Rizzi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I, I, I'd love to participate. And to be cross, talking with Mr. Percival tonight. You know, I, in terms of feeling welcomed or not, I think that sometimes people inadvertently can create a dynamic where people don't feel welcome, especially the same parents tend to do the same thing every time. I think if, if that happens, if the same parents are part of the organization for years and you may have a problem with attracting people. You know, they're parents and I'm one of them, that tends to be a little more, you know, reserved. And if I join a group and then like I don't have a place to fit into that group, and this is inadvertent. I'm not, never going to say anyone is purposely excluding anyone. But I think that there are ways to, just as there are ways to encourage participation in a classroom from people who tend to be, or kids who tend to be related that, there's ways. there's ways to like attract parents. And if you don't see parents, um, you know, who tend to be like more quiet or, you know, a little less, um, you know, um, what's the word?
Time.
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Rizzi. Um, I'd just like to, um, go ahead, talk to you all a week from now.
Sorry, I'll, I'll be very brief, um, echoing a lot of the comments, but also building upon what, uh, Mr. Percival said. I do think that dinner and childcare are an issue, I know they are in my district. I also think it's not just about money, it's about lack of time. There are a lot of parents who don't have the time to sit down and like argue about bylaws and get a fundraising training and a governance training. And I also worry that we can do all those things, all the schools in my district, we can find three people, we can train them up, and then we'll say, hey, look, we've increased parent engagement at the school, but we actually really haven't. So the other part is that, I don't know that we actually know how to properly do authentic community and parent division. And I see that as someone who worked in government or engaging, it has been part of my job and I'm, you know, we are a part of that problem. So it's about engaging the parents with the limited time of attention they have and using that time instead of having them like schedule meetings and like arguing about bylaws, like the, having that work done by other people that can do that work and being like, what are the priorities for you as a parent? What should we be talking about at these meetings? When you show up and you only have twenty minutes of attention after you've stopped your day at work, plus you still have to take your kids home and put them to bed, what can we talk about that would actually help you, make you feel better about your school and your kid? I really think that needs to happen and, and I don't see a ton of that just one year.
We can certainly pass that on to, and like help our families that both the three that we do get that are willing to, we'll give more than three. But as the individuals that we're, um, hoping that will do the, you know, the part, the paperwork, the bylaws, et cetera, we'll definitely pass on that education and help them engage. Um, and how each PTO, PTA is run is up to those parents who inevitably take on that task. So we'll make sure that we give them, um, like you said, a, um, a platform for how to authentically engage our families, whether it's to our dads, whether it's a parent forum that's really, um, close to heart or about something that's a hot button issue, or maybe just come see your baby perform. And we have the PTA meeting before the performance, you know, thinking about ways like that, we can definitely do it. And each one of these organizations are autonomous and we give them as much as we can. Ultimately, they will choose how to, that will be the sauce.
Thank you. Um, just wanna share a couple of things, I think my colleagues have just about everything. But I just wanted to just call you out, um, Ms. Mason, just for your passion. I, this is not my first time, um, hearing you speak about, um, this area and just your commitment and just level of passion is just very evident. And I just wanna say thank you. Um, um, it's very much appreciated. You know, one of the first things when I became a school board member, um, was my first question for the ninth. What PTOs do we have? What PTAs do we have? And to see that it's, um, a part of Dreams for RPS and that we are actively fleshing things out, I think is great. And I just think, um, just feel empowered to take it to the next level, think outside the box and, and, and swing for the fences. My only really suggestion is just, um, thinking about road shows, maybe, you know, swinging over to the ninth, swinging over to the eighth. Um, and just, not just ways of, hey, can you come where I'm at? Sometimes we just have to meet people where they are. And I don't know what that looks like, but I think that's a huge suggestion to say, here's what we've done. Here's, here's how, how we raise this money. This is what you all can do too. I think would be very impactful, especially in the areas where we don't have as much participation or buy-in. Um, and then the other thing that I wanted to address, um, my colleague, Ms. Rizzi, had already shared about just getting a better understanding of what, uh, districts and schools and those districts are already have them up and running or very close. I know Reed is very, very, very close, I'm really excited about that. Um, but then also for us to be in the know in terms of the, those that are on the advisory council, what schools that they are a part of, I think is also essential in us understanding, um, how we can kinda maybe pair up. Maybe there's a buddy system, maybe we can, um, you know, just thinking about different ways. And I, I, I think that, from what I can tell, I mean, I think this is one of the first, um, segments where all of us have something really powerful to say. So it shows you that we are truly committed to this process with you as well. So I agree with my colleagues, we, we are more than happy to come out, whatever we can do. If, you know, I am happy to put, you know, some of the funds that I have towards district funds, towards something that's taking place. Like how can we just think about, in the next time that you present to us, how can we be impactful in helping you drive success as well? Because we could hear the passion from all of my colleagues in terms of us believing in this process and we know that it'll be successful. I'm very happy to hear that Dr. Darryl Williams is at the helm. I know it's gonna be great, um, but whatever we can do to support, if there are any events, please let us know. We would love to come out if we have capacity. So thank you.
I will come now.
Um, I'm next.
Okay. All right, we're at board business. Uh, receive general assembly summary and corresponding policies.
So, uh, Mr. Stanley is out and so, um, he is our Director of Advocacy and Outreach. Let me see if I can actually work. Yes, okay. Um, so just a couple of notes. We, every year we revise division policies to align with legislation that's been enacted by the General Assembly in the spring. Uh, we make these revisions and we implement, uh, new policy procedures based on guidance and those policies, those model policies that have been provided to us by the Virginia Department of Education and the Virginia School Boards Association, so. Um, in addition to the model policies, the Department of Education also provides summary documents about select legislation that you can find, um, at the link on, I believe, this slide, where it says, visit the VDOE website to receive the update and link to summary documents. Um, the EOE continues to update other guidances, um, throughout the year and we monitor, our team monitors this year around. Um, so tonight we're gonna be presenting a first read of policies that are ready for your review. Um, these have had an initial review by the Policy Committee with several board member committees already incorporated. Um, and this month we welcome any further feedback on the policies so that we can prepare revisions for your approval for next month. Um, we also expect to have several additional, um, policies coming to you for your first read next month, or excuse me, I believe next month, yeah. Um, and so while I will not review every policy tonight, because as you can see, there are quite a few of them. Um, I'm gonna share a few highlights about what is included in the revisions, um, just for your, your understanding. So, um, if you look to Policy eight-three, eight dash three-two on page one forty, our Acceptable Technology and Cell Phone Use Agreement, um, has been updated per this year's General Assembly legislation on cell phone free education and the model policies provided by the VSPA. Of note is the new definitions for smart devices, a blanket term for any Wi-Fi connected device um, that is, that includes such devices as watches and glasses, so it's updating it. Um, and then I just have one more policy for you as well, um, that is Policy eight dash three-one, the Student Conduct, which you can find on page one sixty-four. Um, this has not been revised in over a decade and so we're really excited to bring forth a comprehensive revision that is now aligned to our student code of responsible ethics. Um, there are new policies related to weapons in schools. You'll see that on page one sixty-seven, um, with, that will include a comprehensive list of banned weapons. The Parent Notification of School Connected Overdoses, which is on page one eighty-six, to require that we notify parents within twenty-four hours of a student overdose. We just received guidance from the VDOE on this last week. Um, and we'll be ensuring that we have the appropriate procedures in place to implement this at the start of our school year through our communications, care and safety, health services, and legal teams. Um, so I just wanted to highlight those for you. If you have any further questions, um, please let me know and we will make sure that all feedback is considered before the second meeting. Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Oh, thank you so much for that. Um, the Policy Committee's done a lot of work over the past couple of months, so thank you all for that. I also want to bring to attention the review of Senate Bill that directly speaks to the offering of special accommodations for locally awarded earned by credits for our students that have a individual education plan slash program and/or if they have a 504, okay? Um, I don't know what our current policy reads for the LABC policy, um, but I think that there's some things, school board colleagues, that we need to review. Because some of the, um, comments that some of our parents during public comment have shared directly with their student, not passing a particularly, um, standards of learning assessment associated with that content area course. Also, I think our policy, if we have one, we should have one, should not rely on what the current Virginia School Board Association policy speaks to the LABC policy because it's very vague. And if it's not clear that we have a policy for students without a 504 and a IEP versus students who do, we need to have one immediately. So those are my recommendations and I'm gonna send that in the email, it's very long. I'm also going to add the Senate Bill number with that. Um, absolutely, so we can be clear on, um, and, and here's the two things that we need to be clear about as a division. That students with their 504 IEP do not have to test more than once. And some of our students are, and we're out of compliance with that. If they have a IEP or 504 and they have met the requirement to receive their LABC, we cannot make them test again. So we have to be mindful as a division that we are not doing that, okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Mr. Candace?
I just wanted to hopefully thank Mr. Hathaway for his very close read of his policies and his catches of some great things that I needed to be updated.
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Candace.
Yeah.
Are you next, Tim?
I think I can sit down.
Okay.
Because there are no first reads or, um, yeah.
All right, so we're gonna skip.
We'll have a moment just to quickly review what you all asked us to as a policy committee. So, um, thank you so much. I was thinking about that LABC, I didn't want to lose it. Um, the Policy Committee met absolutely on July the twenty-first and very quickly, um, the board asked the Policy Committee to review as soon as possible the, uh, public comment policy. And so we spent a lot of time on that and we will come, we will meet again to try to patch out, um, and, and walk through exactly what we are trying to, one, satisfy and hope that everybody will be comfortable with. But one of the things that I did wanna share is that our current policy, when Mrs. Burke was Chair in twenty-twenty-one, was revised to have that extension of, um, the fifteen minutes or the fourteen, the fifteen minutes when, um, we ran out of time. So I think the, the interpretation was that we didn't have a space for that. And, and that policy does state that we have the flexibility to do that. It doesn't have to be. So I wanted to make sure that was clear. You have to read the whole thing sometimes, it would probably need to switch paragraphs. Um, and then, there are a couple of things. If you have spoken at one meeting, you will have to miss another meeting. I'm not saying we're voting on that, I'm just saying some thoughts came about. And then also to mirror what City Council is currently doing. Um, and so I wanted to share that very quickly because that's a hot topic, the, um, the public comment period. So we're working together to try to bring something for you all and then also the AI Task Force. Um, their first meeting is August the thirteenth, I think an email and the invitation came out. And at that time, during that meeting, we have representation from every district except eight and nine. So I'm not sure. Thank you, awesome. Okay. So, okay. Awesome, thank you. So that, those are just the things that I wanted to share. And also, we had someone from the city come and present to us on conservation of resources and energy management that I wasn't, I wasn't aware of. And they were talking about, um, how they met with our facilities team to discuss ways to preserve and conserve our motor vehicle energy and different things. So what I asked was, um, they were looking at HVAC systems as well. So what I asked was if Mr. Hathaway could come to our next policy meeting. So the Policy Committee could be updated on what that work was.
Was it for the expectation of rewriting policies or putting policies in place?
Policy six dash four point one, motor vehicles will be, yeah, motor vehicle.
Oh, okay.
And I, I just wasn't aware.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Great, um, do you have a timeframe in terms of, um, public comment for that policy? If when you all would be able to present something to the board?
Mr. Stanley and I are gonna have a one-on-one on, um, trying to pull up the feedback together and then hopefully in September, we'll have something ready for you all for a first read. The Policy Committee will meet before our meeting, hopefully, our meeting in September, if not in between. Um, and then surely by October, we should have something for us to discuss and, um, try to put in place. But I just really wanna share with you all that what we have is a healthy policy. And I know you're being generous. My only fear is that if we continue to adjust, because we have fifty people coming, and I'm not sounding mean, I'm just saying, once we start that practice, we're gonna have to continue that practice. And so I just want us to think about that the next couple of weeks. Um, uh, uh, you know, we can't, um, adjust a policy because it's not satisfactory to everyone. So we're looking, the policy that we have for public comment is a really good policy. And I know it's hard, you know, we're trying to hear everybody. Um, Mr. Jafar brought up a good point. When we know hot topics are getting ready to come forward, then how do we adjust that, right? Should we adjust it? Also, when we, in the budget cycle, sometimes our community forget that we should really have a budget discussion and a budget hearing. And we just gotta be clear that that's not a part of our regular, you know what I mean, our regular meeting. So we probably need to do some fine tuning on that with the budget.
Thank you, and I think the, the expectation was for, the reason why we put it back into you all's very capable hands was to dig that out, to see if there was something available, to see if there was something in writing. Um, because what we want to be is consistent across the board. And so us bringing it back to the Policy Committee was our way of doing that so that we wouldn't have to keep on tuning and making adjustments and so that it'd be something that we all can, can live with and feel comfortable with as we move forward. Um, because we know that this type of situation may happen before. Thank you all so much for all of your work for that. Um, and yes, Ms. Burke, and then we'll move on to contract.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you so very much. Some people said other systems are going through this as well. And I've gotten some articles, received one from DCU Professor Lee. And we're, we're, we're in the right place when we speak. So I'm gonna pass that on to you, you so designed. But we are in the right place at the right time, but across the country. There are other systems that are deciding upon the same strategies that we are. So in reading the articles that's been sent, it wasn't in that, you know, so we're, I'm not saying that just because of, but to let everyone know that it's okay. It's okay, we're in the spot, the place. And when I read the articles last, we're doing this.
Ms. Rizzi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, um, just wanna link that to the AI Task Force, uh, uh, just to, I'm curious as to, will the list of participants be made public? Um, and then, you know, I wanna make sure that we have a good number of subject matter experts on that panel, um, who have, or, who have backgrounds and, you know, best practices where this is concerned because it is such a, um, like it's foundational at this point.
Absolutely. So we can definitely share with you the names of the individuals who will be on the Task Force, um, as well as the individuals who were evaluating applications, um, and any other individuals that will be. as well as the individuals who were evaluating applications and any other individuals that will be participating on the task force. And it is being led by, I believe, Dr. Demia Thomas.
Can I ask a clarifying question, Dr. Mary Shalmer? Did you have an agenda item for policy six dash four point one? Is that a request or is that a policy?
No, it's, it's, no, thank you for the clarification. It is not because the policy committee was, was not aware. Like, we weren't aware that this was coming to us. So we don't have a current agenda item right now. But that when we meet and that is discussed with us, then I will share that with the board. Policy committee, am I good on this?
Thank you. We will ride along to receive the first free contracts over a hundred thousand and there are quite a few.
There are. There are several. They cover instructional materials, transportation, and cybersecurity. Rather than go through them all this evening, if there are any particular questions tonight, we are happy to try to answer them. If not, of course, you can reach out to me in the course of the next two weeks in preparation, sorry, next month for our meeting in September when they will come to for second read and approval. And with that, I'd also do.
Thank you. We will ride along to administrative updates. Received an update on here in safety I four point zero.
Good evening, everyone. This slide presentation is held over the last month. So really, if you have any questions, it's about graduations that seem forever ago now. That's last, why not? Slide number two really is the one that recognizes old partners that really made everything go well. The police department, Richmond and Land, PCU, Union, and RMC events as well as my staff. If you don't have any really good other questions, I'll let Angela come through later.
My only feedback, thank you for the presentation, is just making sure that we get the communications out. And I know it's probably, I don't know who that is, but a little bit sooner just to, and to proactively have a slot on the school board meeting prior to the graduation so that we can come together, get an understanding of what the plan is in place ahead of time, so that we can add value through asking questions, giving feedback, and also that'll give the opportunity for the public to understand what has been put in place. But outside of that phenomenal job, really excited about a graduation season. You know, we had a few little bumps in the road, but other than that, everything went across great. And so thank you so much, Ms. Parks. No, don't put a point right.
Feedback well received. I wanted to share that some information we would want the public to know. Particularly all of the insights with RBD. And so I think we would have to work with the board to determine what do we want the public to know versus the things that we can share with you all independently.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for tagging me in, Mr. Rizzi. Good evening, board members. Thank you. I'm Angela Jones. I'm the Director of Culture, Climate, and Student Services, and I'm joined by.
Jason Cooper, the Associate Director of Culture, Climate, and Student Services.
And I am very excited today to bring you some information about belonging in our division. I'm so excited that I'm not starting off a presentation with crisis data. So I am very excited about, right, about that. We are engaging, and I'm really proud to share that we are engaging in a sense of belonging campaign for the 25, 26 school year. And want to give you just a little information on how we got to that specific domain that we want to focus on and just share some data with you. So we began engaging our K through eighth graders in a social emotional wellness survey of how they perceive their, their particular strengths and maybe weaknesses and gap areas in some specific areas. And we actually measure our children twice, twice a year. We engage in this assessment process. We, we work with our principal directors that actually hold this in as one of our assessments for the each of the school, each, each year. We're using it October and April. We open a three-week window where we work with our childrens. K two, just to give you a little background, K two, the teachers complete the information for their students. And grades three through eight, the, the children engage in the, in the questions themselves and rate themselves. We are currently looking at areas of self-management, social awareness, self-efficacy, emotional regulation, and sense of belonging. We have decided this particular school year to really dig deep on sense of belonging as the foundation of all of the other work. And we are very excited that our superintendent, Camus, has tagged on with this, with our, with leading this work. So one of the things that we wanted, we wanted to say is, and we've had the pleasure of, of bringing this to our principals at SLA, it's on the Leadership Academy, and we spent a good portion of our morning today welcoming our team back of about a hundred school counselors, social workers, behavior specialists, and really digging into this work. And really honing in on not taking the idea of belonging for granted. We all think we know what it is, right? We all think, I listened actually earlier as we talked about creating welcoming environments, and we worked really hard and especially with the Engagement Office in the last couple of years to really make sure that we're welcoming our students. We have, you've all seen the videos where principals stand at the doors and they give you all the handshakes and the and the high fives or elbows or, or what have you to greet children. And we want that stuff to continue. But we also want everyone to understand that that is not enough by itself. There are actually 11 dimensions of belongingness. And this year, we're actually focusing on four. One, with love, as we have been doing for several years, but love, supported, welcomed, and heard is what we're focusing on this year. And we know that that is equally as important for our staff across all of our departments as well as our, our students and families. So that, because we know that when you have a strong sense of belonging, really feeling like you're a part of something bigger than yourself, academics naturally go up. Actual academic engagement is better. School attendance is better. Staff attendance, you know, is, is improved. Student behavior, students' relationships, all of those things are, are very significant. Physical safety feels better. But even more important than that is the emotional safety children need to engage in school and engage with each other. And so we just basically have great long-term gains from that. We are, we engaged in our survey, as I shared, twice last year. In the spring survey, we had a participation rate of about 88.1% of our students actively engaged in the survey. The beauty with this survey is that we, we are able to read with them. They can use headphones, easily talk into another language. This isn't SOL, right? So we have, we have some different standards that we can adhere to. And we're working to do some, even some better engagement. A couple of, a couple of years ago, we were actually part of the test group to, to adjust the vocabulary. We discovered our children sometimes confused words like quiet and quiet. And didn't necessarily know what they were, weren't necessarily answering. So we were really lucky to be part of the re-norming for the, for the nation. And so we, like I said, we're focusing on sense of belonging as we work to grow our other areas. There are four basic questions that the children are, have to respond to. It's how well do people at your school understand the kind of person that you are? How much support do the adults from the school give you? How much respect do students in your school show you? And when you're at school, how much do you feel like you belong? I'm gonna turn it over to, to Jason to share with you what our actual data says.
Sounds fantastic. Thank you all. So we started off with what are our students telling us about sense of belonging? In the fall time, our numbers tend to be a little bit higher because we're doing all the welcoming, we're trying to engage them. However, as we tend to go toward the spring, the numbers dip a little bit. So, and usually this comes right after spring break and everybody's getting ready to jump for SOLs. But what that tells us is that we continuously need to do the work all throughout the year to incorporate that sense of belonging, that engagement piece that so that we can increase the attendance and minimize the behavior so we can have better matriculation throughout K through 12. It also gives us an idea that although we are close to the 56% for elementary and 42%, we can do a lot better. We used a weighted score of 49% and our goal is to get to 60% under, over all the thresholds. As we move forward to the next question, which was, how well do people at your school understand the kind of person that you are? So we are being very strategic with working in various groups, using other components and to ensure that these students can work and have a better understanding of not only who they are, but how they are received by their teachers or anybody else inside of the school system, right? The other look at that is 72%, which we celebrate. 72% of the students feel that they do have a caring adult inside of that building as well as 53%. So we've been above the threshold of 50%, however, still not good enough because every child should feel that we should have someone in there that they can come to as well as, as well as in middle school. One of the areas that I often look at is that that 53% represents 47% of the students who do not feel that they are connected to an adult in that building. So we just have to do a little bit more to engage that student, make them feel welcome, make them feel heard as well as feel loved when they are supported through their academic process. Now, with the 70%, then we go to how much do students respect each other? And that's the real work right now, all right? When we go to school, when you think back to when you went to school, it wasn't about the algebra test that you were getting ready to take. It wasn't necessarily about the history test you were going to take. It was that student engagement, that peer-to-peer engagement. What's going on with my friend? How is, how is it able to, what's going on at after school? What are we doing at the lunch table? Those are the things that our kids are missing, that socialization piece, that communication piece. But that also lets us know if we look at kind of some of the things that are going on on social media, that we are really missing a true component of citizenship, which also encompasses problem solving, the ability to communicate effectively, more social, emotional skills that can help these students. So our goal is to, and we'll talk a little bit more about how we plan on changing that number as we move forward. All right, the next one. And then it goes back to how much do they belong? Our students really feel in the elementary school that they do belong somewhat, but I'm still questioning that middle school area. We have really 59% that do not feel that way. But we do plan on engaging those students through the next slide, which would be the playbook. That playbook has various components that we are continuously working on creating. A great deal of the SEL components, the second steps, you belong here, various digital poster boards, as well as trying to really get student-staff social media to spotlight outside of the, using the phone in school. But we really want to work on PSAs to really invite students to understand that we are loved here and you belong because when you belong, you believe. And if you believe, you will become, correct? So with that mindset.
You there, partying?
Oh, yeah. So we did come up with that slogan, belong, believe, become for you all, and we'll, we'll all receive one of those. But it's more than just a T-shirt. It's a, it's a change to the mind frame and the mindset of not only the student staff, but our students as, as well as the rest of everybody that's a part of our class.
Thank you. We're proudly.
Yes?
Before we speak, Mr. Camus wanted to share.
Thank you.
Thank you to the team, first of all.
Absolutely.
We are very good in education about determining whether our students learn to read and do math well. We have lots of ways of assessing. I think we are less skilled at determining whether all of the work we do to help kids navigate the world socially, emotionally is having an impact. And so this work was born out of my charge to the team to say, let's prove whether everything we are doing is having a clear impact or not. It is abundantly clear to me that we have extraordinary folks who are supporting kids day in and day out in our school system. But really wanted to focus what I think are a lot of very well-intentioned, but perhaps not coherent activities towards this one domain which research says is really powerful and is a bit of a linchpin as it pertains to the broader SEL group. This is the start of this work. There's a lot that needs to happen and there's a lot of reflection that we need to do about what are the practices, not just that our counselors have or our social workers, but our teachers and our custodians. Every interaction a child has at school contributes or detracts from their sense of belonging. And so what I would say to the board and to the system is to think of this as sort of planting a flag in the ground and saying, we are gonna move the needle on these numbers. And we think that will have a profound impact on our kids and that's all of us accountable to that. I think that's going to, and it should catalyze some change in how we operate. I think some of the things that we're doing right now, maybe aren't having the impact that we think they are. And some of the things that we're doing actually do, we need to do more of them, and there needs to be some different training, and this toolkit needs to go from a beautiful manual to something that lives and really can be seen in all of our schools. So anyway, I say all that to say, we've had many conversations around this table, this board and prior boards. And I'm gonna channel Ms. Rizzi for a second where I think the legitimate feedback was, look, this sounds like there's a lot of good stuff happening, but how do we know? How do we know if this is really having an impact? And so this is our good faith response to that, to say sense of belonging, we know there's a research-based way to measure it. It has some very key components. And we're gonna work really strategically to try to move the needle on those components because it makes a difference. So I just wanted you all to have that.
Thank you. So I saw Mr. Hinch pad, Mr. Blue, Ms. Rizzi, Ms. Jafar.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you so much. This is really important work that, that you're doing. And I know the famous quote from I. Angelo that alludes to, it's not how, it's not what, what is said, but it's how you feel that is memorable. And so I think that, that really resonates with me and the work that you're doing. I wonder, is, do the building administrators have access to the specific students? Records, they know who doesn't feel like they belong? So then that way there's targeted instruction or targeted efforts to, to really, to make, to, to bring those kids into the fold. And then my second question, then I'll, I'll be quiet, is about, I wonder if the, if the faculty, the adults, also if there's like a reverse survey that, you know, do, if, if we had a list of all the children, how well do you know each of them? And then, then that can give us concrete data that says there's three adults in this, in this building that know this child well. And maybe we have a rubric of what it means to know well versus to know versus to kind of know. And so that also I feel like could be another way to, maybe you're already thinking about that too, but just a couple of thoughts. Thank you again.
So I took notes on the reverse survey. But to answer your first question, this, this panorama tool that we have, that the division has invested in is very powerful. And it does break down by the question, the students who are demonstrating the most struggles and perceive themselves as having the, these positive responses as well as the greatest strengths. Because the flip side is we also want to see the kids who are feeling really good, what's happening with them? And how can we harness some of that to, to share some of that? But in addition to even seeing this, we can also see it pushed up against attendance, behavior, and academic performance. So we can really see where, where the quad, it's not a trifecta, but I'm not a math expert, so. To quad something. Where those really come together and intersect. So we can really leverage the right supports and not just kind of hit in the mid. and not just kind of hit in the mid. But that's a growth point for us as well, we're excited about.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Flou?
I love that we're doing this. I love that what this presentation, when I read it, spoke to me was that education, not just here at our BS, but everywhere, is so much a human thing, and that there are great staff who show up every day and pour themselves into our kids. But also there, you know, we show up sometimes and we're not our best selves, and it's important, I love that we're, I have to tell my children all the time that they're gonna be kids, they're gonna be teachers that they don't buy, that they're not gonna be friends with, and yet those people still belong, those people are, you know, that's their school too, is what I teach my kids. I will just say, I don't think, maybe the numbers are dramatic, but it tells a story that we all probably know, right? As our kids get older, right, the middle school years, we're talking about that. But what I, my one sort of charge to you is, I would like all of us to pay more attention to the fact that as our kids get older, especially as they get into middle school and high school, they have so much less control of their lives, especially at school, than they did in elementary school. They're treated differently. And I know we sort of dismiss middle school, it's like, oh, it's a middle school thing, it's that time, you know, that age, but I really think there's a bigger story where you have kids, almost seventy percent of kids, coming into a space where they don't feel respected, that I struggle as a forty-year-old adult going into a space that I don't feel like I'm respected. I can't imagine what it must feel like for a child, it's far less emotional maturity than me. And so really think about how much are we controlling kids? Can we really like take a step back and challenge ourselves? Do we really need to be controlling these kids as much as this? Can't we give them a little more autonomy about how they get spoken to? And I've also seen, right, I've seen adults speak to kids in ways that are unacceptably and get caught in power struggles and shit. And that's, you know, so I hope that there's a space for staff to have that conversation where it's not about punishment, where it's about like, look, we're not here to like get you in trouble or write you up, but like, just have an open conversation that this kind of behavior's not okay. So that's my piece, thank you.
Thank you. We have Ms. Rizzi, and then Ms. Farah, and then Ms. Bird.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm so glad to see this. It makes me excited that we are talking about hard work here, which is extremely important. There's so much research that shows that the more a student feels safe and appreciated and a sense of belonging at school actually does positively correlate to like academic achievement. So it's, this is really important work. And then the piece about, you know, listening to our students' voices. So often our students don't feel heard, and this is a tremendous step in the right direction toward allowing students to have voice and some agency in their education, which I think a lot of them don't feel that they have. And so I really appreciate it, and I look forward to the updates about it, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Farah?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just think like in general, this whole, all these presentations tonight have been about belonging, which I think is a perfect way to start off our year, and whether it's our parents that feel belonging, okay, but I think with our students in particular, you know, that they have that one trusted adult in the building. But I think that they also have the language to confront moments of when people aren't being kind or aren't being, understanding of the different cultures that they find themselves in the room with. How can we give our students the ability to speak out against that and feel safe in doing so? To speak out against bullies, if they see a friend getting bullied or their friends are doing the bullying. Because I think, you know, as people hide behind social media, that's just, our society's becoming more and more in time, and that's leading to them not feeling like they belong. And I just, you know, I know our students, districts across the country are dealing with this, it's not just ours, but it is a place for us to be a true leader, and I appreciate you all, like really narrowing it on us, because I think, yes, if our students feel like they belong, they will come to school every day because they feel loved and safe in their classrooms. And academics are success, it's only gonna come from there. So just thank you, and you know, whatever we can do to support, I just think this is where it starts.
Thank you, Ms. Bird.
Thank you so very much. I love what you just shared, because we all want to belong, no matter the age, no matter how we look. So my question is, first of all, it's very important, whether it's the crew chief, lady who works at the cafeteria, the bus driver, so I hope that our adults also have the opportunity to have their cups filled. Because as we continue to expect them, as Mr. Flou just stated, oftentimes, we're not in that place. So when we think that children should be treated a certain way, I'm a wholehearted, I believe in that completely and bits of, and I know that it does work when we do pour it to them and expect to let them know that they're okay. Because every day our children get their bully, I mean, off school grounds, off school grounds, I just heard something a couple of days ago, it just blew my heart away. And I'm not gonna tell the story now, I'll tell you about it later, but it's heartbreaking as to how sometimes we treat each other. So my concern is with the adults, with the, what's in the path with all that you have, will everybody have the opportunity to have that safe space or that safe go-to as well? As we take care of others, we too must take care of ourselves. And maybe that doesn't fall under your department, but at the end, I don't want you to be over there about that, but at the end of the day, when we talk the talk, we must walk the talk in the world. So that concerns me greatly, because we pour, we pour, we pour, we pour, we push, we push, we push, we expect, we expect, we expect, but who's filling our adults' cups?
So I think as, thank you for that, those comments and that question. I think as Superintendent Camus was sharing, like, to move this takes everybody. It's not gonna be the one classroom sitting at one specific middle school or elementary school. It's gonna take every, everybody. And I'm, and we are very excited that, you know, across the division, our other directors have, are latching on to this as well. Cooper, Mr., oh, sorry, Mr. Cooper, tomorrow morning will be before this CSA. One of the things we have to do is to start to educate people on the notion, right? And so he's already been, he and a couple of our teammates have already been with a subgroup of transportation, they'll be going back with the rest of the drivers next week, I believe, with various part employment, office associates, just starting to get the word, we've just gotta start speaking some common language, that's why I believe in the T-shirt, it's not about just the having a fun T-shirt, but we gotta be unified in our messaging and our language and our vocabulary, and it starts with just generally getting the word out. And then back with our teachers, using it in the curriculum, you know, every lesson is a lesson. You know, there's the lesson that's on the lesson plate, and then there's some other life lessons involved in there as well. The full, to answer your full question, we gotta continue to build it and figure out where it is and where we get the help to fill all of those gaps, because we can't do it. Are we allowed to say that? Or can't? We can't. We can't do it by ourselves, it does take the whole, the whole village. The movement, they did, they did. I mean, if I were to show my age, I would think that. No, no, our chief and I wanted to have, see, I was gonna do.
These are all sisters. My other question is, I wanna commend you on having eighty-eight percent, how in the world can you do that?
Again, not alone, not alone.
You need to share that, because that's, and I'm glad you stayed, that you all spent it, because that's awesome. I don't think I've ever heard of, that was for, how many people?
It was for K through eight, our students.
You received eight, you didn't during the school day?
Absolutely.
During a particular period in private post-academic?
We, well, we had various plans, so, yes, we had various plans.
You can go home now and enjoy the receipt. You're giving all there, okay?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, thank you. Love that.
Mr. Percival, Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Like everyone else on the dais, I'd love this a thousand times. This is fantastic. I have absolutely no critiques or criticism, but there is a question that is haunting me, and I think it's a fifth question, and if I were to put a fifth question on here, it would be, is there anything outside of school that is interfering with your sense of belonging inside of school? And I don't think we need to go down the rabbit hole that may be outside of our wheelhouse, but if, if we can't answer that question, we may be missing, we may be really aiming wide at a target with whatever we try to do. Because there could be a thousand things, like it could be peer pressure, it could be family life, it could be, I know from school age, you know, there'd be kids that'd be like, hey, school isn't cool, don't feel belonging in school, come join a gang or something.
Thank you, Dr. Harris Mohammed, and Mr. Jafari.
I have been able to see for at least fourteen years, the work that your office has done, the roles that you have been in, Ms. Jones, and Saturday, once again, the team hit the mark. When the families were in a line at your table in John Marshall High School gym, because of the love and the resources, they were coming for the knickknacks on the table, but I was able to see from afar the love that you all were giving and the attention that you were giving to each family and the associate director. So many of our black and brown kids do not have a positive blackmail role model in front of them every day, so that's why they were around you more than her. Because they were trying to just grasp what, what you were, right, and who you are, and the way that you were talking to them and interacting with them. It's not the first time I've seen you do that with kids, there's nothing fake about what you do. Or Ms. Jones, it's genuinely hard work. I mean, I was very, just very impressed, and I knew that our families were being loved on. I mean, every vendor in that gym demonstrated in their own way how much they love our families. But it's something about this team that you all have put together, and I know you very particular about who's in front of kids, but I just thought the line was never gonna go down. They passed the fresh produce. And I'm like, well, is the fresh produce at their table? Like, what's going on? So whatever you're doing, which is positive hard work, continue to do it. And I know it's a lot, it's a lot you're experiencing pouring out to families and kids. And so I just thank you for the work that you continue to do.
One minute.
And always ask me how we can partner in the sixth district to touch those families. Because one side of the sixth looks very different from the other side of the sixth district. And so, and I thank you all for recognizing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jafari.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Certainly, I echo what Senator, what's by the board and colleagues, but you know, I look at what the work you're doing, and I know it is instant and it's present taking, it says one thing, it says something in terms of statistics, but I think one of the untold things that I'm seeing, and I think it's gonna get better even in the future, is that what you do and the questions that you're asking, and of course, coming back around Mr. Percival, trying to put that question in there too, I think it's an important question. At the end of the day, what you're doing, when you get our students, our young people to engage and to answer questions and talk about what makes them feel like they belong, I think it does just, does untold measure for their confidence. And also, I think it's gonna reach a long way in helping to quell some of the intra-student conflict that you have. You know, when students are able to talk to one another, or even to voice their own internal feelings, it gives them a balance of security about how they conduct themselves. And you know, I've worked around, I see how that works, so I just wanna commend you on what you're doing, but also say, like I like to say, the best is yet to come.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Just thank you. Thank you so much that you, that you all do. I mean, I remember being that awkward little kid that didn't quite fit in and was always misunderstood, and a lot of, even my leadership style now, about ensuring that people are heard and seen, is from deficiencies that I had from childhood, from my childhood. And so I really appreciate the toughness behind you, Mr. Camus giving the charge, and you all just taking it in and going with it, because if we are missing half the child, we are missing the whole child. And a big part of that is what they're feeling internally. We know that statistics show us that most people who act out, most of the time, it's because there's something else that's happening that they can't quite articulate, and I believe that this will help them or train them to be able to really speak and voice some of those things, and I think we'll all be better because of it, so thank you. Thank you for your partnership.
Thank you all.
Well, we don't need the T-shirts tonight.
Oh, they're already here, they're already here. We got some pictures for you too.
I'll pass them out before y'all go close.
Are they size appropriate? There are a variety of sizes that you all may have, is it unisex?
Is it the muscle T-shirts?
I'll grab a medium, please, thank you. Alright, up next, we have received update on William Fox Elementary School.
Two days.
Is there something going on?
Two days. And so, we've been cutting on Wednesday, I am so very excited that full circle, we're about to close the loop and come back to Hanover, so I am very excited about that. We already have eight hundred and thirty-three people RSVP, but not already. And so we are calling for volunteers and bringing the team together to make sure we can manage that number of people, you know, as we have people going through the building, but also the other activities that are going on at the time. But we are very excited, we hope we'll see many of you at the celebration. If not, please let us know if you did not get a chance to get a tour, we will make sure you get one. It is a beautiful building, it was before, and if you go in, you will see the character is still there, which I didn't expect to see, made me feel like it was gonna be a new build, that's what I was thinking in my head, but when you walk in, it feels like Fox. And so we're just so excited to be just a few days from being back in there, the teachers are gonna be back in there soon, so we're just very excited. So one more presentation we'll give next month about Fox, and then that will come off, because we will be back in, and we are so excited, so.
Any questions? Ms. Farah?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Ms. Camus first.
Look, I just wanted to publicly thank Daniella Jacobs, I don't know if she's watching right now, but obviously, that's, what's that, nobody's watching. So I'm just gonna voice that into the universe.
It's being recorded.
I am.
It's being recorded, yes. Principal Fox, who has led her community through so many ups and downs and transitions, not just her students and her families, but her teachers and staff, they've all begun the process of moving into their rooms and offices, and it's a beautiful thing to see. I also want to thank the construction team and Coleman Palloway, who some of you have met, or you met at the walkthrough, who's been kind of taken the lead on the day-to-day, and as you can see, everything's coming together quite beautifully. Also, thank you to Leslie for pitch hitting us facilities and new construction, and most importantly, to the whole team at Fox, who just rolled this under stuff in the way. We are very, very excited to have everybody back. And as Mr. Percival noted during our walkthrough, I think it is a great example of what a really fabulous renovation of our school's looking like. We have a lot of schools that, let's avoid the fire part, but if we could do the renovation part, would make a tremendous difference for our kids. And, you know, we were talking about a sense of belonging, you know, the way your building looks and how it feels physically contributes a lot to kids. contributes a lot to kids' and staff's sense of belonging. So anyway, it's a great example, and I'm just really excited to celebrate it all.
Thank you, Mr. Jabari.
I just wanted to say thank you. I'm gonna forget everyone, and I know we're not live streaming, but just thank everyone. I also want to thank the former board as well. I know they supported this project and forced it and started it. But the building is beautiful. And I think, yes, I think all our schools in our city should look just like that. And so I hope that we get the funding that we need with the state. And for our soons to have that. Not just for those two children, but without a fire.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd like to see update on district communications. I thought you should be okay.
Good evening, everyone. Good to be here with you. Given this presentation was originally slated for July, but we pushed it to August. And I'm just here to provide a brief update of sort of where we were and what we did last year when it came to school-wide communications and where we hope to go next year. So if you've ever talked to me about communications, I always say that we've got two main goals. The first is to tell the full story, not only the positive news, but the full story of RPS and our remarkable student, staff, and community. And second is that we are consistently sharing information transparently, proactively, and in as proactively as we can across all of our campuses, whether that's a preschool or high school. So last year, we made a lot of big changes to ensure that we could do this really well. And the first big thing that we did in telling our story was we revamped our CHS Direct approach and our design so that we could better share stories. We could better talk about the students and staff that we have. I'm really pleased to say that we currently have an open rate of about thirty-eight to fifteen percent. The average open rate across the education industry is twenty percent. So we're really, I think, ahead of the curve here. RPS Direct is open to anyone in the community. It is completely open. We do not require that parents get it. They have multiple other ways of getting information. But this is the item that is most open to the public and most comprehensive in terms of very right for updates. The second thing that we really stepped up last year was to give as many opportunities as we can to bring people into our stories. So through that, we helped put on RPS Diaries that appeared to the Science Museum. We had replacements on CBS National News, which was really fun. And we also really stepped up the number of one pages that we did and the number of sort of infographics that we did to share information with folks. We added a couple of new events. We added the kindergarten signing day, the taste test takeover, and student celebrations that really put our core audience, our students, at the center and helped them create really positive memories for RPS. We also really tried to expand on social media, in particular Instagram, because that's the place that most of our parents tend to be. We're not super active on Facebook, so we do have a really strong... Our staff in particular and alumni are often there. And then TikTok, it's a little bit for the kids, but Instagram is where our parents are. You may recognize the stars of our most popular reel from last year. We went from eleven thousand to fourteen thousand followers. And we listen to You Don't Call, we've seen seven, three thousand times. We also really focused on how we push into new partnerships and meet people who don't call the CS. My favorite thing that we were able to do is we were able to bring paid social media advertisements to the division. So working to get targeted ads in front of staff who may not already be in our audiences or circles so that they can see and hear like, hey, come to RPS, here's what we offer. My personal favorite is we also added bus ads to promote enrollment, working with GRTC and understanding where to place ads, how to get a good ad in front of our core audiences. It was really exciting. And I saw two on Saturday, which feels like a very good open. So keep an eye out. They're on the entrance side of the bus so that folks who are waiting in line can see them click the QR code. We also have inside of about ten percent of the GRTC fleet right now, interior ads that encourage people to go to RPS. And then the other place that we really leaned in last year as a team was in sharing information consistently. So the first big thing that we did was we helped create consistent brands for all of the schools. We have some really cute ones. Elementary schools are usually adorable. A little bit tougher to make a really cute high school mascot. We've got some really strong and empowering high school mascots. But one of my favorites is Beaver. We also, through that work, also really stepped up how we support our school-based administrators and ensuring that they are posting two events per week. Sorry, two events per week, a couple of announcements per month, just really increasing that amount of traffic so that people know that there is consistent information. We also really started to think about and talk to folks internally about how does communication build trust? So how are we supporting principals and regularly and consistently getting information out there? Through Remind, through Instagram, by email. I think one of the things that I always say is if we're not telling our stories so many others, so even if that's something happening on campus, how are we sharing that information really quickly? That really plays into, I think, our support certain response situations where I think every single principal knows that if they call me, text me, they need to get something out. We are able to do so and support them really quickly so that they can build support happening and developing. Last year, we used Remind to really help that parent communication and that two-way communication. And that, I think, teases up really well to what we're doing next year and are kind of our big ask of the community right now. And that is our transition to Parentsware. So Parentsware is a new two-way messaging platform. Remind was acquired by Parentsware, so the Remind service is sunsetting. So we had the opportunity to make the transition. We looked at a couple of different vendors. And we really did find Parentsware to be the platform that suited all of the communications needs that we have. It has integration with other social media. It has two-way communication. So if I text you in Ukrainian and you text me back, it comes to me in English, but it goes to you in Ukrainian. We can do form and document submissions intentionally, which I think will be a crucial. And it also gives principals and school leaders really good analytics over who's opening their emails. So if anyone ever comes and says, hey, I didn't know about this event, you can actually see, did you receive it? Did you put on it? Did you open it? Which I think is very helpful. So right now, we are really in the process of getting all of our folks in the right place for Parentsware. Parentsware is fed by Aspen. So if the data is not up to date in Aspen, it will not be up to date in Parentsware. So we are working with tech services, with talent, and with academics to make sure that A, all teachers and staff are assigned to the right school, since we know that is a big need. And B, that parents as well are assigned to the right school with their right students. We are also really making a big push over the next several weeks to encourage people to activate their account. So as long as their phone number or email is in the system, they will receive a communication, but they cannot engage with that communication and DM back. So we really want people to activate to register their account so that they can take advantage of the full, you know, breadth of the services. And also so that we can really support schools in getting all of our school-based communications into one platform through one platform. Because we know that for parents, getting a text here and a WhatsApp here and an email there and a newsletter here is not always the most efficient way to get information. So that is our big push. You will see a lot, you will hear a lot about our activation and our role over here. We currently have about ten thousand parents who are activated and about two thousand staff. So we are in a good position, but we really do need to make the push towards the English school here. But really quickly, because this is a brief update, like in conclusion, we're a pretty small but mighty team. There are five of us in the entire communications department, which I don't think you would know if you see the breadth of communicating that we do. But we really do see our mission as creating better conversation between school and home and between RPS and the greater rich community. And overall, I think we are on a very promising path. We obviously have more to do. But we even received two national awards last year for the work that we've done. The first for our work under direct, and the second for a documentary that we produced with JY. So that is the brief update of where we are.
Could we happen to know that this signed up for Parentsware? Those have the two-point rubsies?
I want you to.
And so, please, you have to make your notes, make sure everything is correct. If folks have some questions, make sure that all of their information is correct. They're well and fully informed.
Thank you so much. And just thank you, you are a small but mighty team. And so, and I know there are times where I myself, I might forget at the ninth hour to ask to post something, and there's never a time when you're not on it. And so thank you for your leadership with regards to communication and all of your help with everything, the full gamut of the talking points, the emails, the posts. You all do a phenomenal job. We're really excited about the success. We're not surprised because we're ethically great. And we look forward to seeing what you're gonna do in the future.
Thank you. We really love what we do.
Ms. Rizzi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Like turn things around. You know, I think we're getting a better handle on managing our own story and telling the stories that really matter. And getting the truth out there sometimes when other things are happening. And so, kudos to you and your team for that. I do have a question, I think probably other parents might, might too. Like I have Remind now on my phone, I have Aspen on my phone. I sign up for Parentsware, all three stay as that.
That is a great question. We are, we still have, we're done with Remind in terms of updating it and having new information. Historically, we sell the system live in the event that we need to send anything out and folks have to register. But we are really only using it at this point to send, hey, have you signed up for Parentsware? That's it. So please focus on Parentsware as the sort of one-stop shop for all of that communication.
So should this app stay on my phone as well and asking, should I uninstall?
I'd uninstall Remind, but Aspen is still going to have your brains, your data, and your information on, you know, about school-like performance and assignments. Parentsware is more like you can DM your teacher, you can see the newsletter, you can get updates about how school activities as part of the group. See photos from field trips, things like that.
Now, Darni, some more of this? Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, importantly with Remind, no updates have been made. So if your child was in kindergarten last year in Remind, they will be reflected in kindergarten again this year. So it's, there's really, really sunsetting entirely. So that thing is updated.
Yeah, we are hoping to turn off Remind around October.
And then, oh, there were flyers at Summerfest that explained Parentsware. And I asked if they were on the website, and they aren't at this time, so can we get those? I took photos of them and then just, yeah, I'm gonna put them on my social media.
So we can add them too. We have a Parentsware Q page on our website. We can put them there. We're also working to get them to principals at open houses and back to school nights. And I can show them to you as well.
Okay.
And we'll be doing them in the following months.
Thank you. Before we move to four points number five, we just have a brief update from Mr. Cameras. So we hope that some of the board received an update on the empowerment of federal title three.
Yes, as I shared with you, and has been widely reported, the federal government has released not just the Title III, but portions of Title II, Title IV, and some other sources. We're grateful that that has occurred. And also disappointed that we had to do that, I must say, this actually. So yeah, nonetheless, the money is flowing, which is pretty good, and we are grateful.
Thank you. Moving right along to four point three five, we received an update on one point twenty-five, twenty-six, reopening.
Hello, good evening. Student Morgan, Superintendent Cameras. So I'm really excited about standing before you again with better numbers. So they keep going down. So this is our reopening update.
It's the stuff.
Oh. I'm sorry.
It was in the wrong order. That's my fault. Need my glasses. There we go.
As of July thirty-first, our vacancy numbers were at eighty-nine classroom teacher vacancies. As of today, they're down to eighty-four. So we're steadily moving in the right direction, so that's exciting. And that's a vacancy rate at just over six point three percent. And today was day one of new teacher orientation, so that was exciting. The energy was up. People are excited to be joining RPS. So that was a very exciting thing this morning, so. And the next... Show some definitions here of the different types of licenses that we issue. Provisional, full teaching, and the new LEL, which is the one-year eligibility license. So these licenses are the main three that are issued to our teachers upon hire, whether they're coming from other districts or whether they're new to the profession or need a little more time, coursework, before they can get a full ten-year removal license. And the, this is the list here of new principals, assistant principals, and new principals that are joining the district. And the next few slides go over more of the detail of the vacancies for each cluster, which envelops each school directly. These are the preschools here, it shows the numbers. Cluster one, elementary. Cluster two. Three, which is middle. And then four, which is high school. And those are the details there with the vacancy numbers, how many long-term subs that we have in place and ready for the school year start, and teacher pay scale vacancies and support vacancies. And then the next slides go over the classified positions and the numbers there. And I failed to mention also, the nursing vacancies have gone down to zero as of today. Operations there. And that's all. Any questions?
Mr. Brooke? When are we expecting to see? At what point during the year do we usually lose most people? Or expect to lose most people?
Lose?
Meaning people who decide to quit or decide it's not for them or...
Well, with teachers, there are a contract. So we don't release them unless they are being released for a promotion. So they can't go to any of the neighboring districts, so we don't allow that type of release. So they would have to be for promotional or to...
So we don't really release staff in the middle of the school year?
Not usually. We do a few here and there, but it's not, it's not common.
Okay.
I do want to note, there is an uptick in January, which is common in school systems. And so, while Mrs. Haskins is correct that we don't officially release people, this is still America, I believe. People are still free, I believe. So they can, they can choose to do what they want with their lives. And so we get reservations. So I do want to note, in January, that is like...
And that's where the recruitment team is already training for these summer graduates and recruiting heavily, building the pipeline now.
So the big turnover is over this summer?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Brooke?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. For the classroom vacancies, the current scan. I know we're still continuing to hire, but are we starting to at least set up long-term subs?
Yes, long-term subs are in place.
Okay.
And at the elementary level, they have completed and they are ready. And we're still working on secondary.
So, yeah, just to clarify, if you look on the charts, you'll see the column says long-term subs. In almost every case, they match the number in the classroom teacher vacancy column. Because, so for example, here, let's just take Rob Rock there has one classroom teacher vacancy. You'll see there's one long-term sub. Red, two classroom teacher vacancies, two long-term subs. So they've already been identified for those vacancies. You'll see if we go down to the high school level, it's a little bit trickier to find subject-specific substitutes. So you'll see there's a, John Marshall has one, oh, there, we've covered it. Open has a point five... Open has a point five, but we haven't been able to cover just like the long-term subs. So there's a little bit of a variance at the high school level. What often occurs is either collapsing of classes in the interim or if necessary, we have daily subs or we have virtual instruction where we have set up partnerships.
Just a quick, I know, I feel like the Richmond Success Academy number has stayed, I think maybe it was six, and now we're at five. And I know that's a challenging environment to teach in, and I know it's something to learn all primarily. But I know that's also preventing building culture and things like that when you have long-term subs. So just if we can continue.
Yes, yes. We're very diligent, working really hard. I do want to give a shout out to my sister. She's an RPS teacher, and she recommended one of her friends who's moved here from Tennessee. She's gonna be a math teacher at River City, so. That happened last week. Shout out to Valley Sailor. Yes.
Thank you. I know the board members received an email that was forwarded us from one of our long-term substitutes. And this is always a question for myself that comes from our staff members that are in the long-term substitute category. And after I read that email, it reminded me that somewhere the communication is increasing with the gap in the communication because they still don't understand that when you come in as a long-term substitute, the benefits are not going to be the same as someone with a provisional license, even a LEL, a local educational license, and definitely a full license. So I'm, I'm wondering if we, and I'm not saying you all are not communicating that, okay? That's not what I'm saying. But I think we probably could do some strengthening in that area to just say, you know, you're not gonna be eligible to receive bonuses, you're not gonna be paid. Now, during COVID, I believe the administration did pay our long-term substitutes, you know, because, I mean, I think most divisions did, because we didn't know what was happening, right? But I do believe at that time it was communicated somewhere in twenty-twenty-two that we were moving from that practice. I can't remember exactly when or where, but I do remember it was communicated that we were moving away from paying our long-term substitutes, even when they weren't working, okay? And so I said all that to say that maybe we could look at try, maybe strengthen our communication to let them know that they're not eligible for raises in a way that's communicated with love, that they, they are still appreciated, you know what I mean? They, they are still a viable member of our team. But because they do not fit in this category and they fit in this category, then the benefits that are in that category do not apply.
Yes.
And I am, I am not in any way saying that you all are not communicating that.
There's always room to grow.
There's always room to grow. I love that. There's always room for improvement. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. I just, you know, my only concern, obviously, in the life, Miles Jones has been, has struggled with vacancies. It's been well over a year now and really want to get a, understand how we can wrap our arms around it. We have been one of the top high-part staff schools. Some time, I just wanna get a better understanding of how we're gonna approach that moving forward, because it's been a very long time.
Well, our approach is we try to think outside of the box as much as we can. Our roots are on the ground. We have an awesome recruiting team, our principals. It's really all hands on deck. The communications team, when I post something, they share it, and then they share it, and they share it. So we're trying to get our outreach as much as we can out there so that we are known as employer of choice. So we're doing what we can to, you know, build up.
And I know that Principal Tally has done, she's done some tremendous work in that, for proving herself.
Yes, exactly.
And she's at every event, I think, that you all have had. But I'm just trying to understand what the barrier is and, you know, why we can't seem to move the needle in the areas. It's just been so long.
I honestly don't have an answer, but Miles Jones and a couple others require some deep investigation this fall to really figure out how we, how we change things. Typically, where we see repeat years of high levels of vacancies, to be honest, there is a leadership issue. I don't think that's the case in this situation. So if something else is going on, we need to really dig into that. But, you know, for many, many years, we have struggled in places. Or we apply the team's effort and have the right meeting or place, and typically see that turn around. And this is just not happening. So we need to figure out how to, what to answer, what to do.
Appreciate that. And on another note, you know, on the token side of that, River City is in the gray now. Very excited about that. So thank you for your efforts there.
Thank you. Collaborative.
For sure. Thank you for you and team.
Thank you.
Mr. Jafari.
Yeah, good evening.
Good evening.
Of course, I'm looking at, I've looked at the staffing, the different clusters, and I see throughout the whole grouping that the classroom vacancies pretty much correspond to the long-term substitutes.
Yes.
And so as I, as I look at, back, well, this is an extremely high number here. Don't have a running number of how long that's been like that. But I kind of wonder if, do we lull ourselves into just accepting long-term substitutes when those numbers are like that? You know, not worry, if we got eight vacancies, well, we got eight long-term substitutes. We're not allowing that to stop us from pursuing. So what steps do we take then to come out of this? Because this is, this is a holy.
Yes, the search for the long-term subs comes from that vacancy number. So while they're recruiting and filling positions, we ended up with eight vacancies. So then our sub-team is on it to try to have at least a teacher in there in two weeks when the school doors open. And we've got, you know, two more weeks to also fill, and we're steadily filling. The momentum does not go down. Not at all.
Just trying to get an understanding, because like I said, that's, that's number three.
Yes.
And Mr. Percival?
Madam Chair, I've moved the School Board of the City of Richmond convene in closed session one to consider the appointment of hearing officers, the assignment appointment, promotion and performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of teachers, principals, assistant principals, classified employees, or appointees for discussion, consideration, or interview with prospective candidates for employment for teachers, principals, assistant principals, classified employees, or appointees, personnel actions for today as permitted by Virginia Code two dot two dash three seven one one A one, and two to discuss and consider the performance and possible discipline of classified employees and to consult with legal counsel regarding the same issues as authorized by Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one A one and A eight. And three, please wait, to consider the admission in matters concerning compulsory attendance related to student matters, two five two six dash zero one, two five two six dash zero two, and two five two six dash zero three, where the discussion would involve the disclosure of information contained in the scholastic records concerning a Richmond public school student as authorized by Virginia Code two dot two dash three seven one one A two.
Second, it's been moved by Mr. Percival. And a second is by Ms. Ricard.
Mr. Percival?
Yes.
Ms. Ricard?
Yes.
Mr. Perut?
Yes.
Mr. Hedge Pet?
Yes.
Ms. Rizzi? Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Jafari?
Yes.
Ms. Fernandez?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. We're now in close, colleagues.